The United States of America, the Republic of the Americans, one nation under God, indivisible, and eternal, and just as well.
Rover.
Oliver, I'm in Africa, Oliver Zenadino.
Yes.
Oliver, Kathy, Nancy, Oliver, Bernard.
Here.
As for the meeting, I spoke with MML, Doc, I guess you had some things you wanted to speak about other than park later on?
Couple of things, yeah.
As long as it's subjective to the budgetary things, you know, we can talk about it, but we can't over make any decisions.
Yeah.
So, and the citizens can add to everything, but we just can't, they get, take everybody's advice, that's all it is.
Yeah, that's good.
Alright, so, alright, let's start with the park.
We have to put together a draft of a letter to inform everyone, April was trying to type it up, to go out with the bill. So we have a poll from the citizens.
Does the water bills?
How many say?
Does the board want to have a discussion on that?
Yeah, that is a waste of money.
What is?
Marvel, what a pool.
The pool?
Yeah, the pool. I mean, you've got to consider, I've got to buy two envelopes stamps because for the stamps, for the envelope to go out, I've got to buy the envelopes, I've got to buy the envelopes for the pre-packaged or the pre-return, for the return. I've got to buy stamps for those, that one. I also got to do, um, buy the return, yeah, the return of the, right, right, on there. So, I mean, what's in it, you're looking at close to 200 dollars, at least, at least two.
What about like the, uh, what about the water bills? Usually send them out, I mean, I've got multiple ones, so I give them out a lot of times. You send them out individually, like a little postcard?
Yeah, because they print it out, they'll print it out on the little postcard, individually.
If we went that way out, does that save you money?
What do you mean, print something on the bill?
The postcard.
Oh, a postcard.
Or...
No, I still have to buy stamps for the postcard, yeah.
What about if you print something on the back of the bill or a card?
Well, the bills won't be on it, they're already gone, is that okay?
But, I mean, maybe that's cyclical.
Why can't we just have a citizens' push-up, this is a cage even had to meet.
Yeah, maybe put that on there.
The park's been closed for two years and nobody has...
About the forum, whatever you do, we got enough time to, I mean, they'll have it on here.
On the next meeting, which is...
They can speak.
June, July 11th, I think it is?
Yeah.
Is our next meeting?
It is the other one.
So they can come in and say, if they can voice their opinion, voice their opinion, I can put on there, you know, for the park, and then they can come in and voice their opinion on it. I mean, that would save us money, really.
I just thought that the last time we talked about doing the poll.
Yeah, well, after, after I figured it out a lot more.
Two hundred dollars is a lot.
And that's at least two hundred dollars.
And how many will sit back, you know, actually?
Exactly, I can guarantee you might get one return, really.
Maybe, maybe.
Yeah, it's, well, participation is poor, but also, that's a presumption that we're making that no one will respond to, which is, I know it's the history, but it's also a little unfair to presume that because, you know, they, I, I thought that the reason...
He gets mad, but he's always angry with business.
No, well, that brings up another point, maybe we can do like a website thing where people on their phone can say, yes, no, maybe so, you know, whatever.
Yeah, if they have you control and ensure that it's just citizens that are voting.
Well, usually, uh, you can be identified, we, we respond.
Really, help them?
Yeah, like on, for example, on Facebook, if you like something, then if you hit the likes or loves or whatever, it shows who did it. You know, so that's a way to control that and you'd know who it was. And then the, and then the water bill, you know, if you just typed in one line, vote on, or, you know, or respond on the city park issue, you know, once, because it's going out.
I mean, that won't be until in the next month, not a lot.
Yeah, but it's, are we in a rush to get to that?
I'm saying so.
So, so do I talk to, uh, park?
Yeah.
Was there someone complaining last time when we suggested this? I thought that it was the next day, it's...
Um, Mr. Gerardo spoke about the public agenda, he said, spoke, but we're here.
He was here in our session.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Brother him, or in the meeting.
One of the two.
But, I mean, to me, if people wanted it, they would have, you know, I've been asking about it for the last two years. I mean, it's been locked for the last two years and nobody is...
Yeah.
And only one person asked.
I've had one person call and ask to rent.
The ten years that I was the collector, you maybe had two people rent it, maybe.
Yeah, it's not enough to support it.
And that deposit didn't cover the water and sewer that they had to let you.
But that's our premise behind wanting to close the thing, anyway, that it's not you.
Yes.
You know, so, so we just need that approval to do it.
You do that, you would have to have two weeks.
To me, the approval is...
To do an actual, it's almost like a...
Well, there's really no reason why we need permission other than nameless, that we may not rent out.
Perspective, we own our, what is it, say, uh, you know, whatever it happens to be. Regardless of others.
I would have thought they would have said that whenever we, we closed it two years ago and nobody said anything about it, so...
Yeah, but it's our obligation, as always, to, uh, to cover public's interest.
I understand all that, but I also understand that's a lot of money we're going to waste.
Yeah, but we're, I think we just addressed the money thing by technically not showing on the water bill, it's just going out anyway.
That's going to be hard for me to type it up, I mean, I'm going to have to put a sticker on it, like one of those address labels. I'm going to buy address labels and put that on...
Would it be acceptable just to bring it up and have a public discussion that the next meeting? That's what I say.
Yeah, a public forum.
That's what I say, baby.
Because it could be a public forum in the hearing, they can speak more than three minutes if they want to, or whatever they want to do. If they care about the park, they'll be, they will be here to voice their opinion, I would think, I would think.
And if it don't have labels on the car, I'll help you with that, it's only 300 labels.
That's fine, but I'm just saying, it's just, you know...
I think we just need to do it at the next meeting.
I'll just have to print it all out and then stick them on there, but, I mean, it's, whatever, I can do whatever I can do, but... But like I said, I, and I, I was placing money on stamps and envelopes, send it and return envelopes.
I hear you, we just addressed it, but I do...
And I know some media people from, you know, San Jacinto, sometimes, and that thing, it's more than two by fours and that, but it's more than that. You know, how it was placed on the news about closing, it wasn't really definitely exactly how it should have been, but, so...
Closing versus selling or something?
No, just discussion about it and the damage done to it, some people have an opinion, it's a couple of two by fours and that, it's more than that.
Yeah, it's a lot more than that.
It's not like a ticket and excavator, I mean, there's, there's a lot more busted. They think it's that easy, they can volunteer and come down and do it then, I mean, if they think of a couple of two by fours, but it's, there's a lot down there.
Well, that needs to be totally...
Yeah, I mean, there's those, water lines are busted, I mean, it's...
It needs sinks, it needs everything.
Yeah, so, I mean, because it was put on there, but, you know, everybody has their own opinion, but of course, they don't live here, so they're going to put their opinions here anyway, so, but they love the park, but they never utilize the park, it's funny how it works.
Back in the day, I loved that park too.
Yeah, but they don't utilize it, they don't live here, they're somewhere else, which is fine, they can love the park, a lot of people love the parks. A lot of people love the Speedway out here.
And a lot of people don't even know there is a park here.
Yeah.
Because it's so, it's such a drag.
Sheriff's Department, they don't know that we even had a park. I mean, that's how, it doesn't even show up on your hand. So, not knocking them, it's just, it's not...
Yeah, it's just...
So...
Many years ago, they probably did.
Well, yeah, yeah, it is a hop a place with the ballgames, I mean, and everything.
Right.
But since then, it's, you know, we got plenty of time to move on, it's just, we can let the public have, I think a public forum would be cheap for this thing. I, I do see both points, I mean...
And we can get it all done and have it on sometimes, maybe.
That's good, yeah.
And we're going to do this at the meeting and, so that'll get out there, people will know.
They'll see it on there, because everybody's on there.
Yes.
And I can reach out to Mark Evans, if I have to, because I do store it on as well, so...
Yeah.
So, if we do a secondary Facebook page for the city itself, then, uh, then I guess great, they have some type of agreement on who's going to be the administrator of it, and what goes into it, so that it's more administrative, formalized instead of, you know, social media, Gabby, I don't like this, I don't like that.
That's how I did the police department one, and it would filter out the other things. And then when I was on duty, it would automatically switch over, had a push button, and it would go straight to dispatch. And, you know, but that was a different thing, but as a government entity, set it up as that, and you can set your curators and everything.
Okay.
Municipalities.
So what are your overall feelings of doing it?
How about?
Okay. So...
Because I don't have time.
No, sure, sure.
So we can have moderators, I mean, and, you know, we changed moderators, this thing, so, I mean... And it would actually be good too, because if people like or share of it, Don would watch it too, and then if you say we have a water break there, we got this couple of months, we can always post it on there, or hey, water, or something going on, you know, and, you know... Because, I mean, there's sound smaller than us, a half-exposed page is, and... So...
Great. Uh, so, did you, you said, in that?
Uh, anybody else on the park, or, I guess, we'll just continue on with it. Uh, Doc, whatever you have, I mean, you want to talk about it, go ahead.
Well, I want to circle back on the sludge issue, so we're, we had a mutual group email about the haul off on it, which is 82,500 gallons, and we came in under our original estimate. We haven't, we're going to finance this, it's via a money that we had set aside in C D pursuers. And, uh, and it's imperative that we do this because it cleared a way for us to get our engineering studies done, so we could move forward on wastewater treatment plants, corrections or modifications, and then ultimately liner related issues as well. So, uh, we can see if we can find some funding, or grants that'll help us have additional funding to handle these issues, which are imperative to handle, because we have a routine breakdown of our blinders that we pumped out, as you know, 490 probably. And, uh, so that's kind of going far with that. Uh, and now that we have our bid in, someone raised an issue, we're not like taking a whole C D cashing out or anything paper, just use whatever we need. And then going forward, then, I, I think for maintenance related issues, we have to figure on budgeting semi-annually or annually to haul additional sludge off, so we never get in this position before, and again, and, uh, and actually, Adam, Mary Adam gave me the tour of the place, you know, everything is like, it's pristine, you know, it's pumped down to the bottom, and it's never been that way in 20 years, and there's still a little, this is headed, trimming out the little things around there, but, I mean, it's, it's really amazing given what it was before. And then now that, that's done, there were some sludge drying beds or something, one that was torn down, and I have, if we get to the point where we have additional funds to do it, maybe we can kind of start going back to our original blueprint for the plant, which had those beds in there, so you can force stuff off to dry, there is those cans everywhere.
So the old plants from the original plant, the original, I'm talking like, had drying beds next to the, that's where the equipment needs to be. But they took them out and valves, wish that would have helped, but we don't have that, because that would, what you do is put the dry weight, I guess.
Yeah.
It's like a secondary system.
But it would be up to the engineering firm too, I mean, a lot of places are going to that again, we've got this more capital friendly, because once it decomposes so much, we can be able to write a form.
You said to put a little roof over it so it doesn't get water, or anything, so I'm in. And that's like a backup, kind of like a backup system, so, uh, that's not current, you know, current, that's like once we, uh, get some more issues knocked out.
Yeah, because I think we got in our, our legs.
Well, we still have to plan about, plan on that stuff in the future too, so...
And we've get, we've been getting, you know, and you've been getting engineer people emailing you about, or women, Mary's got several on the job board, on the state board, so they've been reaching out to her, she's working on, well, please this week's in, we'll get 100% funded, so, she's working hard on that, she had surgeries, so, I talked to her today.
She's in the army?
Yeah, she's still, not traveling, but at home, so, but, uh, she just, you know, and then she's also running a plan in April this time here, that takes her away for her study and the water.
Water, water.
Well, I know, I know, I was just about lending them, whenever, then we can see we're right there, and then she's going to help us kind of budget with this, like you said, with this, we're kind of got to go with this.
Yeah.
But we should be getting portfolios, I would hope, soon by end of July, with the timeline is, because they've been reaching out to her and Frankie as well, so that's good, better than nobody saying, for kicks, you know, so...
And then April on the, we talked before about how we had insurance payment progress for different...
I called in today, she, I had a lady message, so I'll try it tomorrow.
Then, uh, this is a, uh, an issue that's connected, like in terms of expenditures, we get a certain thing about the tractor, because there are tractors having no funds in it, so, uh, Adam and I are looking at, oh, John, different used tractors versus new. Yeah, so, uh, oh. Yeah, okay. Oh, we got that.
They had an offer, or...
Yes, so what would we offer?
Yeah, so, give it, the 5205, we had an offer for 80, 8500, I believe it was. The one that's had a lot of issue.
Oh, the one where he's...
Yeah.
And the other one, did you, did you say you got it?
I got it going, but I haven't pushed it, but that one is, it was only made for four years, had a green one, purple way, Mike said. Mike works for Vermin, or he works for Tractor House, so, uh, he's interested, he, he offered 35 for, you know, the army one, because this is going to be a hard one to sell, he's got another one up there, it's one of their things.
Right, right.
But the other one, he said he was just going to part it out, I asked him how much versus fix it, and we're looking about 15, 17,000 dollars just to...
Right, right.
And today I used it and I had no breaks at all, coming down.
Oh, yeah.
It's going up at all times.
Yeah.
And then that army one, my son-in-law's a farmer, central, and my large farm, and, uh, he, so he's into, you know, equipment. He told me that the army one ran in in terms of value, it's, it's almost like a collectible in some circles, and it may run as high as 20, he said 25, but 20,000 for, but then we get, you know, the 2500 coming in, and so somewhere in between, we ought to be, and it'd be nicer if that was close to eight or 10, and then we have a nice truck.
But with the purple way thing, you know, you aren't trying to buy it, okay, that is really interesting.
You may, unless someone's so gone there, went through without a cab, but more hours would be a 13 or 15.
Yeah, so that's kind of, we need to get our deposit money on a tractor, Adam and I looked at one over in Southern Illinois, something when I passed Cutlerville, and it was a Kubota, a 2001, that for 20,000, that was a 56 horse or 60 horse, so... And then I got in after, we looked at it, I looked at other Kubota dealerships, there are a lot of tractors that were like 2013, that were more like 28,000 or 29,000, so, I don't know, 20 seemed like a good price, I checked with, with Son of Tom, he said that's, you know, it's probably worth that, but Adam brought up a lot of good points about, you know, these nuances on it, like there was a chunk of rubber missing out of the tire, and some couplings were, uh...
Chinned ever, like Johnny Bat Lane, that wasn't used, so, that was a concern.
So there are some, you know, possible issues we had that we didn't know about, so we're still looking, and anyway, I think we're going to be in the ballpark of a used one for about 28, you know, between 25 and 28,000. And then if we go new, then it's obviously going to be more money, and, uh, but we have some discounts that are available, because we're a municipality for that, and those also, which I personally didn't feel comfortable with, would be, uh, if we get it new, then we'd be making payments on it, and I don't want to either personally or collectively, I want to really be careful about putting the city in a position where they have a long-term financial commitment to something when we have other issues that are just asset-oriented or whatever, so, I kind of, we're going to be circling back to this at different times in the near future, so, I just kind of wanted you guys to be aware of that, and, uh, and we may have a group text issued that has to do with this, if there's a good deal that comes along or something, so, so, how do you feel about that?
Flay's, they offer this, 5,15205 and 2,000 on there, but Flay's, Flay's, David's didn't want it, so, David says has a tire lead for 33, is a demo, but here's a look at it, which way you go on this, and then, that one's going to go, I don't know, I don't know when, I can't tell you when. It's length, it's just length, you know?
Where are you going to get the, the yellow, they need that on purple way?
Oh, I would play for you guys to decide, we can decide at the next meeting, and call the regional person, he comes down to take the pictures, and puts it on there, and they set the date. And then like, whatever you guys decide, like there's a truck, there's a...
Well, you're going to say, what else?
Huh, we got the, the old Chevy dump truck, yeah.
Well, I think, I think we need...
Whatever that, we don't utilize.
Get a list?
Yeah.
For the next meeting, have a list of stuff that we're going to put on it, and then let's knock it out.
Because I think, I mean, we need to...
It's in the way, maybe if you do that.
Right, right, and why have crap, you know, clean?
Yeah, yeah, that's it.
You know, so, just do some spray paint, probably a cement paint, whatever you want to call it.
All right, so that'll, that'll probably be...
Yeah, wait, I just kind of have to list them.
Yeah, I can do this.
What it needs to be.
That won't pay them time.
Then another thing, uh, we know with that one?
Uh, are you wanting the purple way of the secondary control part? I thought I got them great, they're great one, if I bring some money to you, it's fully outfitted, are beautiful, you want to do that?
And they ain't even used for years.
No, no, it's just sitting down there, I would ask them, so...
Whatever we don't use, we can get rid of it.
Okay.
Take the money for it.
I would ask them just out of the thing?
You want me to go down there and point there with it?
Oh, I could tell you that.
Does that commercial, uh, we move junk or whatever, and we point, we get rid of it?
Wouldn't we just like recycle the plant?
Good, alright, so let's get in on that, and then, uh, next is, uh, oh, uh, I've been watching, you know, the city operate, and, you know, basically, we only have, we have Adam mowing, and, uh, Adam and Frankie are, Frankie's not even mowing anymore, is he?
No, Cody's mowing.
Cody's mowing.
But he's got a little bit of an issue with that.
Yeah, he's got, he's got some medical problems right now, so...
Okay, oh, Cody, and then Adam's doing stuff too, so, uh, so it raises two issues, one is a, it needs to be done, and B, uh, the previously we were paying city employees to do stuff like that, and now Adam's doing it, and I guess it's just time to give guys a donation to the thing. But, we have to think about, like, if he needs help to mow at the cemetery or something like that, then we got another person that we're going to have to, uh, bring on board, you know, where there's going to be some salary related issue, which since it's a salary or, you know, hourly thing, or whatever it happens to be, then that'll probably be addressed in close discussion, and everything, until that other person, an extra.
While we are, so we hired Cody.
But Cody's going to take time, but Cody needs, like, help too, because, I mean, and I'm going to be out after tomorrow, I ain't going to be able to do it, so, I mean, I...
So we definitely know we can wrap up the backup.
Well, we, I mean, yes, we need another person to help, but I have, for a past year, the highest, put stuff out there and...
Joey, I've been...
Nothing, you get, you get people that really didn't have a right alone, definitely don't know how to operate a tractor, so...
Joey's been helping me mow, you know, what Cody couldn't get done, he finished the graveyard all the way down. I did the tractor, he used my equipment, I paid him out of my pocket, just to get it done, so we could get it done, you know, and it was hot, but, very nice. Anyhow, so, I mean, I've been, and he knows how to use the, the pumper and everything, I showed him, he learned, but it's just one of the things, it was three days a week, you're just going to help Cody, you know, Cody's not going to help, he'll tell you it's everything straightened down.
So we may need another extra part, another extra part timer, which I guess we could...
Or change the order, whatever you want to do, I mean, that's still have to do that.
Anyway, food for thought, and, uh, kind of immediate thought would be to, uh, cover, if we want to step over here. Uh, then, like, uh, parallel to that is the personnel policy for the city, it hasn't been, we got a letter from the state a while back about stuff that needs to be reviewed, because it hasn't been done in a while, uh, but... It's, it was an audit, state auditors report about needing to upgrade these, and this was actually done in, I thought it was 2010. So to, uh, to my knowledge, it hasn't been completely, it's a tough one, I guess, so we need to go through, there's a thing, so both, some are just, we need to be like, read it, go, we outbid the suppliers and, uh, so, uh, I don't know who wants to do that, or if you want to do it as a, you know, two people or something.
All of them.
And I would have offered help as well, if they grow on Fridays.
Oh, yeah.
If they have one, that's okay, would you all, like, send the old ordinances, like when she offered to help, like some of the old ones? Maybe you can come in, that's where I never issued the offer to do that years ago, but the ordinances.
That, that was University Missouri Extension. They came down and offered to go through all the, all the ordinances and weed out the ones that were either illegal or obsolete or whatever. And the city turned them down, free charge, wouldn't cost anything. Now, I don't know if I still do that, there's all completely different.
That was University of Missouri, you said?
University of Missouri Extension.
Is that out of Columbia or here in San Diego?
Harburg's that one now too, I believe.
I think so.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll look into that, so that we can.
Yeah, that was, that was years ago and like I said, it's been a complete turnover of people, so. Whether that is still valid, I don't, I couldn't tell you.
And then, lastly, in my stuff is the, we got dicked for only having one water feature kind of operator.
We know all of us.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Uh, so, uh. Uh, I thought that there may, may, maybe to Missouri Rural Water, you know, an option to have a clerk. Someone do a clerkship or a training to, uh, to help.
There you go, you know?
They have a.
Don't get your license.
They have an internship.
I don't want that responsibility full-time.
They have an internship program for the people that go through there and we just got started up, the municipality does, Mary said this. And so, how they get their certifications, Frankie would show them, learn the ways to get their hours, you know, but you have to have some hours down there. Then after two years, and pretty much repay the Missouri Extension to half of thirty-eight hundred dollars one year and that, that pays for testing. They take care of us and then they get their water operator license, but we can choose the person or. They'll find somebody who has a backup, just in case Frankie's not here, if that makes sense. So, this is a new program for, for journeyman, I guess she called it, a journeyman license. So it's a new program.
So now we're looking at the license, but we'll be.
Yeah.
No, no, not, they're, they're committed then, once they sign it, they're committed.
But even if it worked, that, uh.
Well, I know we do have one that's in, but they have to stay at least a year or something.
Yeah, and it also would know, it's very.
Oh, we, uh, I don't remember, I don't know if it's a year or longer, it might be longer, I think it's.
I'll stick with it.
It might be longer, but I'm just saying, we had an order saying that they had to stay.
Yeah.
But that was when we would make further sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the, I'm not familiar with the ordinance, but that ordinance could be modified if the, because, I mean, the ultimate goal, the greater good. Is to have a second person, even in the short term, and then when that person goes, you get another second person, you know?
The way it was to work? We, we quit for, I lost one. I lost five years, just like, and we're like, no way.
Well.
No, it's working.
Been running a lot of governments are going like that.
That's right.
Yeah.
Well, let's, uh, I would, uh, put it out there to look into this, uh, to see if.
Cause this is a good program and she called me about it.
They must talk to her about it, I mean.
It's, it, I think it's a good program and they got some other new ones she's looking at, other things too for us.
Do you want to have, to give Mary their, uh?
I would, she probably told me whatever, I would have her out.
She didn't, she didn't yell at her.
Give her, no, I didn't yell at you.
Give her a methena.
I'll do that.
Cause she, I said she must do it. Or give her, give her a raise, you know, and then she can just kind of like tie it all and.
I can do a C P with everybody, so she can find more out, so.
Yeah, I'd like to.
That's the kind of unique program, I kind of like that.
Yeah.
Because they didn't offer like a board, I don't think, cause pretty much they were on your own.
Right.
So, but they would have to work under Frankie, Frankie would train them, you know? It's just kind of. I know.
And then, uh, last thing I guess is, uh, you know, budget, time's coming around pretty soon and.
We're gonna work on this for the lady.
Yeah?
Yeah, I'll have that on the, the office meeting to approve the thing, we can disable it and then a network session.
Yeah.
Talk about the budget and then in September, as long as it's approved by the end of September, yeah, we did.
And what I would like, since this is, uh, I'm not that familiar with it, but I would really like to have the treasurer. Here during that meeting if possible.
If possible.
Yeah.
But yeah, once we have that meeting set up, that work session set up, or the budget, possibly, Cody can be here.
Great.
Uh, any other? Do we need to revise the procurement policy since it's from ninety-eight and inflation's at eight point whatever percent? How do I, what was that? Oh, you.
That's why she was gone, she was buying on it, come on.
It's just a lot, so. You can't get tired that much. But it had its.
And then, oh, we, since you've mentioned that, um, do we, we, do we routinely use like purchase orders and stuff on our purchases? You're like, I wanna buy this, you know, uh, water department, I need to buy six passers or. Uh, police department, leaves, you know, a milk pad or something, you gotta submit for this order and you buy a, you know?
Well, they, they ask for a P O number.
Yeah.
But if it's. I mean, if I go there, put a problem by the, uh, relays and the passers, they just put mine in there, put a P O.
Uh, okay, good.
I'm on that phone and asking about it, so.
Then two, we already water department are two things that make me, like if we get, if we buy grinders on Bass, and there's a, it's a five hundred dollars shipping charge or whatever, we talked about this before. But I would rather, I'm in St. Louis all the time, so I can run out there and if I'm just reimbursed for mileage or something like that, it'll come off far cheaper than. That's where I thought those would be one of the things to make from.
They are, you know.
Yeah, so I could run up there and pick them up and, you know, save us some money on that, so. Then the laboratory and water department, we need, uh, Alkanox, which is a laboratory glassware cleaning material, acetone. And probably like a super rack with, you know, a half dozen testers, which is, would be Amazon purchase or something, or.
So what you'll have for that goes down to the.
I'll just look that up and do that.
Okay, I've got, I remember listening. And if I try selling them, it's not good. It's not gonna happen.
It'll be recorded.
Yeah.
Perpetuated.
We're, we're gonna have a big expense up there by the, um, Circle Drive with that, that station. So just to let you guys know, that is a.
Yeah, I think one of our grinders went down, what station?
The primary right now.
We may have a station for that, yeah.
And, oh, it's a common sense thing, it was brought up a couple of years ago about one of the grinder pits having hydrodermal pools in it and stuff. And, uh, I, you know, it's inconceivable to me that someone would throw needles in the toilet hole, period.
Yeah.
But it's been done and, uh, we need some kind of public service announcement, even though it's common sense, so do not throw, you know, that.
Well, you know what? When people move into town, they have, do you still do that?
What?
It's not, never.
Welcome to St. Mary's, don't throw.
No, I, no, I gave them a copy, I gave them a copy of the ordinance, I mean, paid for your water meter deposit, I had them, I had a piece of paper where they had agreed and.
Oh, yeah.
Do not, and initial it.
Yes.
Unless they don't know, they know.
I have that paper.
And, and every person signs it, all right, good.
And I even usually, I have a copy of the ordinance too.
Yeah, yeah.
That ordinance, tell them what they can, cannot, can't.
All right.
Yes. Well, that's all right, when I was up there at the little station, you know, I walked down in there, there was an inhaler in there.
Yeah, there's actually.
An inhaler, a, two chapstick, I'm like.
Some roller blades, yeah, yeah.
Well, they had somebody a few years ago that grinder pit was full of syringes.
Yeah.
And I was talking about that last time.
I wonder about that, just maybe I know all about that.
Yeah.
So I don't, you can only do so much, but, uh, it really needs to be honored, huh? And the ones that we're finding them, you know, then they get a warning or something, like a nuisance order.
Well, ordinance four nineteen has fee schedules, I mean, it's in them, in ordinance four twenty, I mean, but.
Yeah, yeah.
We have been opposing those like we should, is, yes, it's a warning and then whenever it's like, you can see it's a liver. So like Mary said, you're paying labor to pump, you're paying labor to dispose and all that, and yes, we own the.
I would.
Grinders, but we just need to start sanctioning them.
I, yeah, whenever, that's how I did it. First time, we took care of it, the second time, if it was the exact same problem where we was finding stuff.
Stuff, that's.
That don't belong in there, it's the same stuff that we found the time before, then they had to pay for it.
Yeah, so I would say.
I say, I think it's, it's in the ordinance too.
It does.
Yeah, it does, it breaks it down even, the biosalids and all.
So like, you know, they would get like a packet with the thing that they signed, you know, and then the ordinance and then what the fees are and then it's a done deal. And we enforce it fully because it's, there's no way around it, we have expenditure connected to it, there's risk to anyone that's involved with it and it can't be ignored.
And that's why a lot of towns are going to make them residents pay for their own needs or grinders over time on their bill. Because once they own it, it's their problem and like their lack and everything, you know? That's why, cause they can't keep it forward to make any, you know, cause all the. Well, but once it becomes theirs or they get sanctioned, then they start taking care.
Well, yeah.
You know, cause they don't wanna pay that.
Yeah.
So.
So we, we should do that.
You know, it just, it's kind of felt the wayside probably over time, you know? I mean, Greece, the size of the Titanic glacier, that's pretty common sense. You know, it's, it's bad, hydrodermal needles or inhalers or whatever else maybe, you know, it's.
They've been brought in and, I just said, there's any foreign objects that do not. Tally with money, glory to that, yeah. I'm not that.
Never mind.
Yeah, that, cause I was reading what's for, for nineteen, Joanne did that actually, and she broke it down pretty good, all the way down to the T. But, you know, Mary said we're losing on, you know, when we gotta dispose that, we can't put it straight into the system, we have to actually put it into a basin, let it settle, fishy stuff.
I guess I'd charge it back for the road.
You, yeah, it's just kind of. You know, oh, we'll just fix it, cool it, spend six hours and then don't do it again, well, there we are again. But another thing, how are we gonna get, has there been discussions on how to get more grinders or where are we gonna get them? Since we got three left and like seven down.
I wish we could, we buy it, it's money, so we can.
I know that.
Buy it, but load them.
Yeah. So, I don't know, it looks like all chamber money, cause I all spent it one time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh. So that, I guess that's, we might need to bust into some, we have to, A, we have to set, create a fund, which we've kind of discussed already, so we.
I saw that.
Just starting to set money aside for that and then.
Oh, yeah, all right.
Excellent. And, uh, we may have to utilize, uh, something from the other resource we have to get that goal and we can get any help on it, because we can't, our organization. There's another thing and it's not great, it's, 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 uh, it's more like a. Clear, clean water app stuff, like if you watch TV, they always talk about Roundup causing cancer or whatever. And we have a boat launch here where people are fishing and catching fish, you know, I hear, but everybody's training. We fill our ditches, Roundup, and it goes trained directly into that channel and out to the river, people are fishing, we fish. So, uh, I don't know if there are, I don't know the toxicology perspective on what, uh, herbicides are. A breakdown or safer, I'm, I'm assuming that none of them are safe. Uh, but when people use those to maintain their ditches instead of weed or whatever, then. Uh, and you look at Mer, that runs, that runs directly, well, some of it runs into the channel and out, this one. So, and I thought way back to London, one of the water guys, uh, that was in the Navy, I forget his name. That used to rent a trailer from Carl.
Lance, what, Mr. Blue Way?
Yeah, uh, I remember him talking about, uh. Toxins, uh, in the water, uh, or in the soil of water, uh, and what it means. And so I know there's existing ordinance about what people are allowed to use to, to figure stuff.
I know there's selective and non-selective, but I know what that also would have, what happened with Roundup. What that is is because of what you're talking about.
Yeah.
And a lot of them, Lankford and all them using on the crops and everything.
Right.
But it's, you can't, it's diluted enough where it's spread over so far, kind of like sludge, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, I use non-selective on brush, like certain things like that, but whenever you dilute, if you measure properly, right, follow the directions. It's not now, yeah, it's gonna kill you if you drink it straight, but.
And actually, they don't, you can't get the good stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can't.
You can't get the.
The Buccaneer was the best, they, you can get, they bad.
What is it?
Buccaneer, they put it on the shelf, you can do it.
Yeah, you can't, you can't access the real good stuff anymore.
Well, I mean, it's, obviously it works, cause you look at a ditch and it's like brown, you know, uh, six feet on either side, so. By the time it rains, it's like, boom, into the water and then it's into, you know?
And I can talk to Moda, you know, supervisor or district and see what they use, cause probably.
Or D N R.
Or D N R, yeah. They married my.
I believe, but actually, we can probably get more information out of Moda if.
Yeah, cause Moda's.
If they're willing to spray it.
Yeah.
Yeah, D N R probably doesn't know, I mean, they might, but Moda, you would, you would get more, that's probably.
Okay, well, just from a safety perspective, you know, for the city and our residents to find the right stuff to use, so we have this, like. That's all I got.
Anybody else have any? Any consensus on anything, concerns, causes? All right. Anyone make a motion?
Motion to close this work session.
And I make the motion to start the work session. Didn't we start one? Didn't we make motion to start? Oh.
Oh, you don't have that.
Oh.
Okay, so we got a motion on the floor to start.
There you go.
I might go home, yeah. My second motion is starting, a second motion in.
All right, there's motion made, second in all favor.
Aye, aye, aye.
And then close.
Captain, captain.
All right.